On a shelter in place order within our community and so I think it would just be, I believe, our duty to submit a letter on behalf of our constituents within our community where we just simply, you know, state something on behalf, especially since we know that Lynn County is right next door to us and when you're talking about the corridor and the jobs between Iowa City and Cedar Rapids, we have probably 1,500 people a day going between these communities. And so we're certainly, even though we're in different regions, the risk is, you know, is certainly there because of the, you know, the transition between the communities. So I think from my perspective that we should submit something. What that something looks like is really the question. Are we going to just cite support for when she does move toward a shelter in place or will we walk many more orders depending, maybe there's one or two that we might find that we wanted to cite in the letter? If so, what might those be? Of course, we hear people, you know, down in Lynn County right now where they can't go to each other homes, you know, is that something that is of interest to us? So I think whatever we submit, we can really customize it to ensure that we're presenting something that is one symbolic to say that we will, we will support the governor should she move to stay in place order, but also to our constituents and actually residents in our community that have called for this time and time again for this order.
And I think we also, in addition to being part of the corridor, we also remain a regional resource and we've seen that now highlighted with, with the plant in Columbus Junction that we, we have a responsibility to the greater region. Again, I mean, I don't honestly hold out much hope that, that the governor is, is going to do anything at this point. But if we do something, it is, it does need to be for our own residents so that they understand that we take this seriously and we've heard them.
Mayor, if I could interrupt real quick, I think we're having some problems with our public streaming right now. If we could just press pause on the conversation, I need to, I need to just check with our communication staff and see what's, what's going on, but I don't, I don't think we're, I think our streaming has dropped. So can we press pause for a few minutes while I check into it?
Jeff, I'm on the phone with Maz here and we're trying to get her on.
Yeah, I'm thinking our, our public streaming may drop, may have dropped.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, one second. Well, I do see.
It's on now. It's live streaming through Facebook at the time, right now.
Okay. Thank you.
And is that Mayor Pro Tim?
Yes, I am finally.
All right.
Yeah.
All right. You might want to change your name if you can.
Who, me? Oh, of course I'm using Kelly's.
Yes, yep, yep.
No, the link that I'm receiving, it tells me I have to start at 7:00 PM, but I don't have a way to change it.
You have to go into the work session one.
But I, that's the only one I have. I just woke it up.
Okay, we can, we can talk offline, but yes, I, I was having challenges also with getting the 7:00 PM link, but here we are. So that's great. All right. So we'll continue with our conversation. Sound like we're up and live again. So yeah, essentially, we were just talking about COVID-19 updates and we were talking about a letter to the governor and what that might look like. What are our thoughts if we still want to submit it? Are there any specific items that we want to add in the letter? That's where we are.
Okay.
I would again just emphasize that I think while the, the governor has the regions, that we do have this considerable flow between Cedar Rapids, Lynn County, and Iowa City. And that, that, you know, that's a, that's a factor that I don't know if it's given enough emphasis in the regional analysis, but it is a major commuting corridor. So I'm just, perhaps, perhaps, you know, the more information the governor receives with, with certain emphasis on certain points, it may nurture toward changing the number on Johnson County.
This Pauline, I agree with John. She may or may not realize the connection, the close connection between Cedar Rapids and Iowa City, that we have so many commuters both ways. In fact, we still have the 380 bus, express bus traveling back and forth and still carrying people. There is a very close connection. She may not realize that.
Mayor, with regard to this conversation, I just want to note, because it may not be obvious from the governor's order, but the, the guidance that we've gotten from the Department of Public Safety is that the restrictions that have been put in place in Region 6, so in Lynn County, for instance, apply to people who live and work in Lynn County regardless of whether they're present in Lynn County. So in other words, if somebody is working in Lynn County and living in Johnson County, they are subject to the guidance that they can only gather with members of their immediate household.
I just want to ask if you, whether you add the uncounted numbers, like did you mention something about the people that not being added to the number and they still have positive, they, they just have this symptom and they believe that they have it, but they never add because they, they never been tested. We have a lot of people in the immigrant community who's like those. And I would love if you can mention this kind of things on the letter because to me, the numbers there is not the real number.
I would agree with you. I would agree with you that the number isn't the real number. The number certainly does lack potentially asymptomatic individuals that don't go in for testing as well as individuals that have gone for testing, but for whatever reason, their physician has not, you know, approved for the test. And so we, I think the governor may be aware that the numbers are not true and citing that in the letter may be appropriate. I think it's definitely appropriate for us to make mention of, of that, especially seeing today that we have 69 individual new cases that were confirmed.
Mayor, I would be favorable to sending a letter to the governor just to go on the record for the people of Iowa City because they have contacted us with such a strong call for more restrictions. I was talking with a business owner just yesterday who said, well, since the closures end on April 30th, we're going to open on the first. And I really think people are looking for guidance and the best that they have is the current, you know, closures that as of right now end on April 30th, or that would be the last day. So I don't, I think it would, I personally think it is appropriate for us to indicate our concern with the increase, right? I mean, it appears from the raw numbers, whether it's the lack of testing or not, that the virus is increasing. And from watching the daily press conferences, it feels like this question of when we hit the shelter in place or not, and what the 10 on the scale means, it feels that that conversation has been subdued and is less front and center than it was a week or two ago. And so I think it is important because people are still contacting us and calling for more, more guidance and more restrictions, that we just communicate that on behalf of Iowa City. And I think it can be very simple and straightforward. I don't know if asking explicitly for authority to do that ourselves, which is what, part of what I understand the community, I'm sorry, the Board of Supervisors did for Johnson County, that may be something we want to do as well.
See, I do think if a letter is written, it might be prudent to maybe send it over to someone at the University College of Public Health just to see if there's any glaring scientific inaccuracies or to make sure all the vocabulary is all right, just to make sure there's all the information being processed and that letter is correct.
All right. Any other thoughts on this? Yes?
Yeah, I'd actually like to, if you, if you all would tolerate, I'd actually like to read a statement essentially into the, into the public record at this point about our need to make sure that we are really looking after people at, to make sure that every industrial plant is protecting their essential workers adequately, which we have seen is not the case necessarily. And there was just another temporary closure in the Amanas in addition to, at the Whirlpool Amana Plan, in addition to the ones that we've seen at meatpacking plants. Regardless of who their workers are, regardless of where they came from and what language they speak, they need to be protected as human beings and as essential workers, not as expendable workers. We need to make sure that we have maximum transparency so that we know when people have tested positive, whether it's at a meatpacking plant, a grocery store, or a long-term care facility. And that, and we have to do everything it is in our power to protect their families and contacts. I personally believe that the state should be doing something like using hotels so that when someone in a family, say someone from one of the meatpacking plants tests positive, whether or not they have symptoms, they can quarantine safely for 14 days without risking infecting friends and family who may also well work with vulnerable populations. In Johnson County, in Iowa City, Johnson County, we've been very fortunate so far with our long-term facilities, long-term care facilities. I know that concerted efforts have avoided any serious outbreaks, which we know lead to death of our most vulnerable residents, who are all someone's mother or father or aunt or uncle or grandparent. They, they are world unto themselves. And I say this as Yom HaShua, the Holocaust Day of Remembrance draws to a close, I really feel compelled to say that their lives have enormous value and that we have to do everything in our power to keep them safe. Maybe that means regular testing for all staff and PPE. I leave that to the experts, the epidemiologists and, and the public health experts. But we have to get this right because they won't get a second chance. And I don't personally believe they're really getting it right at the state level. So that puts all the more burden on us at the local level. We have to double down. We have to model the correct behavior and ask people to do the right thing. And maybe a letter is part of that. And we absolutely have to ensure that we do the right thing for our most vulnerable and stand by our essential workers, ensuring they have the protections they need and the ability to quarantine safely. And, and in light of apparently what an executive order that the president may make, I would just add that he's adding more fear and doubt to our immigrant community and those who are, who are applying for green cards. And all I would say to that is unless any of us are Native American, we are all immigrants. Thank you.
All right. Well, thanks for navigating that conversation with us. And Eleanor, we'll have to connect to get a letter drafted and submitted if that's was agreeable to the council.
Can I get a little clarification here? Is this coming from the council or coming from the mayor?
Do.
What, what do people want it to come from council or do you want it to come from the mayor?
I would prefer the council.
I would also the council. I think it's stronger if we all agree that it comes from all of us.
Yep.
Okay. And, and are you giving the mayor the authority to approve the letter on your behalf then?
Yes.
That's fine.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Great. All right. Well, we're going to navigate to our first item on the agenda, which was to continue the strategic planning conversation that seems like it was so long ago. So definitely, as I was reading through it, it was like, oh yeah, yeah, we did talk about that. So, all right, are we going to have Ashley kind of start us off on this?
Yes. Hello. Good evening. I will start by just summarizing very quickly the memo that went in the packet accompanying the strategic plan notes. Council had its strategic work session in early March, the initial one, and council members shared their first thoughts about high priority items and agreed to discuss possible actions for common themes presented. Overall, there was agreement on the seven main existing strategic plan objectives, still being relevant to the city's current needs and goals with some adjustments. And you wanted the numbers removed from the items to, to prevent anybody from thinking that they're numbering a prioritization of these, of these objectives. So we walked through and council finished working on five of the seven objectives. There's two remaining and I will leave it to you to decide how you want to proceed this evening. We provided a document in, with the packet, with the memo, showing a side-by-side comparison of the prior plan with the specific priorities and then the proposed plan with the newer items or adjusted modified items. The headings were either agreed upon by council at the strategic planning session or for a couple of the latter two that you didn't get to yet, we wanted to, I guess, take a shot at what exactly was discussed and what could best frame the issue. So you'll see as we get into the unresolved topics. Encouraging a vibrant and walkable urban core. It's been relabeled to enhance community mobility for all residents. You are welcome to make modifications. The other, talking about economy was changed to promote an inclusive and resilient economy throughout the city. So I'm taking notes and happy to, you know, just, just follow your discussion as you work through tonight. I'm going to change and share my screen so that you can see exactly what we have here for you to work in. My apologies. Okay. There we go. So we have, this first section here was, was your advancing social justice and racial equity. And just, just let me know where you'd like me to start. I can move the screen anywhere.
Mayor, do you want us, do you want staff to go through each one of these items that you've already completed and allow council to weigh in on those and confirm that that's, that's your intention? Or do you want to kind of facilitate the conversation in a different manner?
Yeah. One, I know that counselors may want to weigh in on what's been present from our past discussion. Wondering if we want to talk about what is present or if we want to continue with the, the last two items and then have some thoughts on those. So I think I'm more inclined to start with the new items unless people feel like they want to kind of get their memory refreshed by going off, by going through some of the past conversations that we've had. I don't know what counselors are feeling.
My thought would be maybe to start at the beginning of what Ashley has and go through section by section. I don't think staff needs to read any of that to us, but maybe just take a minute to look at each section and see if we have any changes so we could maybe put these pieces to bed. And then we'll see how much time we have to get into the new ones, but then at least we could have these all done.
Yeah, I agree with that.
All right. Unless I hear an objection, that's how we'll go. Just kind of go through what we currently have done and then we'll swing with the, the remaining two. So Ashley, you want to lead us through this?
Sure. So the, the several items that were identified in advanced social justice, racial equity, and human rights, we added the human rights to the heading in this section. It's ensuring city progress towards increasing diversity of staff in a manner that's reflective of our community demographics. We're completing the phased effort to raise minimum wage for temporary employees to $15 per hour by July 1st of 2021. We would continue emphasis on human rights-based training for city employees, boards and commissions, and the community. We would establish priorities and ensure resources for increased access and translation of our critical city messaging. We would continue partnerships with community organizations through the city's Social Justice and Racial Equity Grant Program. And the final one here is develop a coordinated effort across city departments to expand social and recreational programming for special populations. So if there are things in here that are, have a phrasing that is, is not indicative of what you want, then we can make adjustments. And we're taking notes.
I'm, I'm okay with all of those.
I am as well. I thought this was a good reflection of our discussion of that item.
Yes, I guess this is exactly what we talked about, which is great. Thanks.
I agree.
Looks good.
Thank you. Yeah.
I will move to the second, the next one. We changed this section from promote environmental sustainability to be more reflective of our climate action emphasis and efforts to lead in that area. So demonstrate leadership in climate action. So we're adopting and beginning implementation of the city's accelerating Iowa City's Climate Actions Report. So you'll see that item later tonight, as well as track and effectively communicate our progress towards reaching the IPCC carbon emission reduction targets adapted by city council in 2019. So trial and people, what we're doing and what progress we're making.
I think that looks fine. And I think the first bullet point just really encapsulates so much because we have so much in that climate action plan. We don't have to try and delineate all that in our strategic plan, but that just really hits it right there. So I think these two bullet points are good.
One thing I wanted to raise was with the removal of the emphasis on the Parks and Rec Foundation, which was in the prior strategic plan under the same heading. I just want to make sure we're acknowledging what we heard and what we learned from the conversation about the Waterworks Park solar utility installation and prioritizing the value of natural areas in relation to climate action. I mean, as I step back from the input that we received, to me, it felt, what I heard was a prioritization of a certain natural resource over this means of, of achieving renewable energy. And as I articulated at that meeting, that was surprising to me. So I just want to make sure as we look at our plan, that we're not de-emphasizing the importance of natural areas in the context of environmental sustainability.
I think the item on your agenda tonight, you know, speaks to that directly. We have 85, 86 acres of, of natural area ready to be created through, through the action you'll presumably approve tonight. So our staff remains committed to not only caring for the, the property, the natural areas that we have, but expanding that consistent with the climate plan and our natural areas plan.
I guess the only question I had on this one was whether with some rewording, item B on the 2018, 2019 strategic plan could be revised and included in the current strategic plan. One, one way I was looking at revising the language would be to say, support efforts to increase the effectiveness of the Parks and Recreation Foundation and other environmental organizations in achieving our climate action goals. So, and perhaps in some way, I hadn't really thought about in terms of the, this question of balancing our, our goals with respect to natural areas within the climate action plan, but it, it's sort of this question of do we want to highlight the collaboration and partnerships that I'm hoping we will achieve through the climate action plan?
Just since I, since I raised this issue, I mean, I, I think that the elevation of natural areas and preservation of those is part of our climate action plan. I just want to make sure that we're prioritizing appropriately. So folks are comfortable with how this is written and, and say, yeah, that includes all of that, including what you said, John, right? If that articulation is within the implementation of, of our climate action plan, I'm comfortable with that.
Yeah, I couldn't remember the actual language in our plan in terms of promoting partnerships, but yeah, if, if it's really well emphasized and stressed in the plan, then my suggestion may not, may not be relevant and necessary.
I think a part of achieving the goals within the climate action is really to partner with community members and look at, we're going to have to be exhaustive in how we really achieve this by looking at various areas within our community. And so I believe that it is a part of it and we don't have to state it here because it really is a part of that climate action.
Okay, are we, are we good to move on to the next item?
I think so.
Okay, great. So here, this had been called enhance community engagement and intergovernmental relations, just modified it to say strengthen those relationships. We would initiate a redesign of the city's website based on comments and kind of thoughts about what our communications strategies should look like. Pursue creative engagement techniques with a focus on reaching diverse population groups, as well as working collaboratively with other local governments and strengthening ties with our state and federal election, elected delegations.
One thought I was having on the second item was adding to that in the following way to say pursue creative engagement techniques with a focus on reaching diverse population groups and neighborhoods. Over the years since I've been involved in city affairs on planning and zoning and on council, I've really begun to appreciate how there's these two aspects that I see as recurring themes. One is issues that relate perhaps to a certain demographic without necessarily any regard to where that demographic may dwell within Iowa City and issues that may be related more to and be emphasized, kind of the place specificity of the issues. So that was one, one thought I had on that.
This is Pauline. I agree with John because we've, we've had extensive discussion on
on trying to strengthen neighborhood associations across the community. I think including that after that diverse population groups and in neighborhoods or encouraging neighborhood association, something to that effect.
I, I see groups more than just race-related or I see that as like the, kind of the bike, the biking crew, various groups that we have within our community. If we are going to add groups and neighborhood associations, I might throw in there and individuals because I think we cannot diminish the importance of reaching out and engaging individuals within our community. So if we're going to add neighborhood associations, then I would definitely request that we add individuals.
I don't, I don't, I don't have any objection to that.
Well, maybe one way of doing it, instead of adding a third one, is changing that to reaching diverse populations and neighborhood associations or whatever terminology John used, rather than groups, just address it as, as diverse populations. And that could be groups or individuals.
That sounds good to me.
So what, what do we, where, what did we end up with then?
Are people comfortable with diverse population, populations and neighborhood associations?
I am. And I would agree with your comment, Bruce, that, that diverse populations, it's based on age, you could ethnicity, interests, like you said, bike groups, et cetera. So it's, it can be used in a lot of different ways as we describe diverse.
Sure.
And John, did you intend just neighborhoods, not necessarily, we don't want to imply limitation to the associate, the formal association, right?
I mean, I'm okay with, if we're, if we're, if the notion of association is not taken in some kind of literal way, but just that there is an association among residents that forms, whether it's formal or informal, I think that's fine.
Yeah, I think we're better off without the associations on the end because neighborhoods is, is much more inclusive.
Okay.
And cross cutting.
I agree.
All right, Ashley, you got that?
I have it.
Great.
Slightly modify that as you were speaking. So we're good to move on. We talked a little bit at the strategic plan session about not only our financial foundation, but also the public infrastructure facilities and our, and our financial reserves. So we modified the title to invest in public infrastructure facilities and fiscal reserves. And we kept many of the prior items potentially rephrased in a, in a different way. So we want to carefully prepare for significant financial challenges projected during the final years of state property tax reform mandates through fiscal year 2024. We would strive to continue to reduce the city's overall property tax rate. We would evaluate local option sales tax and other alternative revenues that may be needed to achieve Iowa City's strategic objectives and reduce reliance on debt and property taxes. We would develop a long-term plan to improve the pavement condition of city streets. Initiate physical and financial planning efforts to modernize and expand critical public facilities. And the final one is to consider establishing a cost of development framework that can help guide decisions and help us to accommodate future growth. So we took all of the things you'd spoken about and tried to piece together some items for consideration.
I had on the last item, spent a fair amount of time on this one. It's, it's a difficult one to capture in one sentence, I think, but I, I will try. This is what I came up with. Consider land use and tax policy promoting land, I'm sorry, let me start again. Consider land use and tax policy promoting long-term prosperity and thriving development patterns.
My concern with that language is nobody in the general public is going to have a clue what we mean.
Well, I was having trouble with the original one that way. It, it is very difficult to communicate these concepts in everyday language. But it, what I began to feel in, in, in trying to move forward on this, it seemed to me it's, it's an issue of land use policy and tax policy that we're talking about.
How taught, how do you refer to tax policy in what way?
Well, what, how are tax policies either favor incentivize certain types of development or disincentivize other types of development? So it, you know, our, our land use pattern is the result of both our zoning and other land use policies and how we arrive at how those properties are taxed.
I guess I don't see how the, we have that much difference in the way they're taxed other than are they residential, are they commercial? I mean, we only have those basic categories from the state. Then we have the assessment and then we have our tax levy. So maybe I'm missing what you're trying to communicate, but I just don't see that we have a whole lot in terms of our tax policy unless we find certain ways to incentivize certain things. And, and maybe that's what you're getting at.
Yeah, it's, it's just trying to, if we, if we have concerns with how the city is, is developing and I, this, I'm trying to also emphasize the fact that we're, I'm not, the, this question of growth is not simply growth on the periphery, but growth anywhere within Iowa City. So trying to focus more on development rather than the notion of growth. And then within, within that context, how we tax property, you know, sometimes in other words, one, one good example, just, just to sort of give a, give a kind of a case analysis on this is property is typically taxed based on its improvement rather than its land value. And so if you have an empty lot, your taxes on that lot, because there's no improvements on them tend to be relatively low, even if that piece of property is in a location of high value, say in the downtown or close to the downtown. So the, the tax burden on that property while it's vacant is very low. Is that what we want? Or do we want to see that land developed? You know, that's one of the consequences of our, with our tax policy emphasizing the value of the improvements rather than evaluating the, the, the value of the property itself.
As far as our sort of next year, two-year strategic plan, what I recall from this part of the conversation, I felt like was encapsulated well in that last item, which was more about seeing if we could benchmark the cost of development so that we had a better understanding about, you know, types of development, sort of subsidizing other types of development. What I recall about the conversation was, is, you know, if, if relatively less dense, single-family development that requires a lot of city infrastructure because it may be on the periphery or it's just, you know, miles of water and sewer and roads and sidewalks, what is the cost of that? And, and, and how are we weighing that and incentivizing our zoning code and development approval process? That's what I recall. And I felt like that was encapsulated well in that point. I hear what you're saying, John, and I think that's maybe a, what I hear you saying is maybe a longer term or bigger issue that, you know, I don't know that it is or isn't necessarily encapsulated in that item. But I liked the little bit narrower idea of just having some sense of the cost of development in different parts of our community and how, how we might, how that might impact our zoning and regulatory policy. So I liked this bullet point, I guess is what I'm saying.
I'm, I'm, first of all, happy that it's in there in some fashion. I think this is a much longer conversation as to how we, what this really means. And perhaps, you know, over the next few weeks, I'll, I'll send council some links to talks that I've been watching recently that influenced me in my thinking along this, along these lines. But because many cities are now in the process of trying to understand what this, this issue translates to in terms of moving forward. But I, I'm fine, you know, if people feel that it's, it's just perfect or close enough, that's fine. I, I do, I did want to bring into this discussion, you know, what I see, once we expand on it and have these more detailed discussions that I, I suspect based on my reading into this issue that land use policy and taxation policy are two things we're going to be looking at.
Yeah, I'm, I agree Laura. I'm comfortable with the way we're getting started on this. And I think this will grow into something more as we go forward.
I appreciate this, Pauline. I appreciate John's comments. I also appreciate Laura's reminding us what our conversation was. It seemed like that was such a long time ago. And usually on financial budget things, I defer to Susan because I appreciate her knowledge of, of financial things. So yet if, if she thinks this is understandable and what our intent was, then, then I'm fine.
I, I'm fine with it as well. And I think that as we go forward and eventually we see what the, what this, what we and the city and our finances and everything else look like as we come out of the pandemic, it may also take a somewhat different shape. So this, I think this is a good starting point.
I guess, I'm not sure this is really my space, but I was wondering, has the city ever considered is supplanting or replacing the property taxes with a land value tax? I think John brings up a good point where the way property taxes currently work is that it almost de-incentivizes building up since the more improvements are on a parcel of land, the assessed rate goes up. But if, if the burden of the tax were to be on the unassessed value of the land, it could be an incentive for density development or more efficient development. The entire assessment process is dictated by state law. We, we don't have the ability to manipulate the assessed, the assessment process. That's out of our control.
Okay. Do we like the way this looks here?
Yeah, that's, that was, that was the only one I really wanted to focus on.
I'm fine with it.
Okay. We'll move into the fifth one. This was the last that you covered on your strategic planning day. We modified this from foster healthy neighborhoods throughout the city to include the phrase affordable housing. So it reads foster healthy neighborhoods and affordable housing throughout the city. So there are four items here. They are continue efforts to expand and adapt the city's affordable housing strategies to meet the needs throughout community. We would consider and adopt the South District Form Based Code and ensure it can be adapted to other parts of Iowa City. We continue implementation of the Parks Master Plan and complete and accompanying recreational facilities master plan. That's been in the budget approved in fiscal year 21. And to monitor and report biannually on building and rental permit trends in the former rental cap neighborhoods. So there was some discussion on that item during the strategic planning session.
Well, here on the, that first item, since we changed the heading, one suggestion I have would be on the first bullet item to say, continue efforts to expand and adapt the city's affordable housing and neighborhood improvement strategies throughout the community.
That makes sense to me.
Sounds fine.
Yep, sounds good.
So we modified it slightly. Does that look good?
Yes.
Great. Any other items here?
There are none.
Okay. So this is one section we did not get to. I'll just read both of them and then you can decide if you want to pursue additional conversation tonight. But we, we modified encourage a vibrant and walkable urban core to say enhance community mobility for all residents. There was significant conversation about access, inclusion, mobility, pedestrian walkways, other, other aspects here that revolved around transit and other items. So talk a little bit more there. And then the other was the economic strategic plan item, moving from strong and resilient local economy to promoting an inclusive and resilient economy throughout the city. During this part of the discussion, there was significant talk about opportunities available for all types of businesses in all parts of town. And there wasn't a lot of conversation about carrying over specific items in, in either of these strategic objectives. So.
Well, this is, this is kind of a different emphasis from what we had before. I'm not, I'm not suggesting I'm, I'm not supporting it, but it's, it's different. One, one question that I had, if, if the focus is on community mobility, would be where we stand with our status with the League of American Bicyclists. I know several years ago in a previous strategic plan, we had talked about achieving gold status with an aspiration of platinum status. And I, I don't know where we are with that particular strategic goal, but it seems if we're, if the focus on this item is now community mobility, that would be a good measure to include under this one.
Yeah, this is Jeff. We do still have that internal goal. Our staff's working towards that. I believe it's, it's this year. It could be off one year, it could be next year, but the, the reapplication period for the bike-friendly community designation is, is either again up and something that the NPO staff is working on or will be next year. We were really close to gold last time and we feel with some of the on-street improvements that we've made the last couple of years, we'll be in a good position to get gold. Platinum's a whole nother level, probably a bigger step between gold and platinum than it was between silver and gold if we get there. So if you want to strive for that platinum status, just know that you're going to have to, to really take some, some bold action when it comes to bicycle infrastructure in the community.
Bicycle-friendly status is also one of the transportation projects in the climate action, action, accelerating actions report.
Looking at the bike master plan was one of the things that I did want to bring up. And so bike-friendly community, I think that works for me. The one thing that I will say is public engagement. I know oftentimes we have a, a plan that we've gone through and exhausted, you know, opportunities for the community to come and gain input. But then once we go and do a project, those go by the wayside of the previous plans. And there's a lot of community conversation. And so this just goes to one of the things above is whenever we do any of these things, just making sure that we have that public engagement. I think that's going to be critical, even though we have, you know, gone and planned. I think once we oftentimes as years before some of those plans actually happen. And so we, we live in a community that things change all the time. And so priorities change. And so I think that's something that we have to really consider when we're doing this. But master, you know, the, kind of the master bike plan as well as the bike-friendly community, I think is definitely something we want to have here. definitely something we want to have here.
It's a, it, the, the accreditation does, you know, it has its series of requirements. So it is, I think, a useful milestone. I was, I was looking up if we were to compare ourselves to other Big Ten cities. Madison has a platinum, it just got it. Urbana, Bloomington and Minneapolis all have gold. And Iowa City and Ann Arbor have silver. So that's kind of the, just some context on this, on this issue.
See, I do know, like think bicycles, Johnson County, when back when May was still Bike Month and they were planning Bike Month activities. There was some discussion about reviving that. It's like go for the gold initiative that existed a few years back. So I think, if I remember correctly, the last time reapplication was done was like 2017, maybe. So next year sounds about right for reapplying to the league.
Yeah, I think, I think based on the, their website, it looked like February is when it's due. So there's plenty of time to get the application together.
When, another thing that I've thought about, at least for this one is when we're talking about mobility and, and community mobility, I thought of just increasing activities within neighborhoods. If, if people, if there's something that is coordinated in, in the event or block party or something like that within neighborhoods, maybe people will be more inclined to go within their own neighborhood and either other neighborhoods. So I don't know if it's parks and recs or if it's the, we have a very active arts and arts community. So I, I just thought about, you know, I thought about that, didn't know how or if this would even fit into this section. But definitely in order to get people mobile, you have to have something of interest for them to go to.
Well, I strongly support that Bruce. And, and in fact, you know, one of our work session items is trying to, and it, I didn't mention it because it, we do have a bullet item on completing the parks master plan, if I'm not mistaken. And it was in that plan that addressed some gaps in our distribution of art facilities. So by achieving that distribution, we should, we should be improving the proximity of our parks to the entire population. Which I think has, you know, a lot of arguments for that. In fact, I think it would advance our climate action plan. But I began to really appreciate it under this, you know, sheltering in place order that the more opportunities we have within, you know, a, a very limited sphere around our homes to, to recreate and get out in nature and as long as it's possible, engage with our neighbors from a safe social distance. The parks provide that, that option. There may be other options as well. It's not simply the park spaces, but that's an important one. And so, yeah, I agree. I think it may be covered under other items. But it is, it is something, if it, if there's some way of coming up with language for it, whether it relates to, you know, pedestrian, that, that would, to me, it would be kind of a pedestrian and bike mobility issue. So that they're close, easy to get to by everyone.
And I think that also I'm concerned that we took the vibrant word out of there because I think what you're alluding to is, is vibrant neighborhood parks too. Someplace vibrant for people to go to and recreate and social distancing, meet, meet folks, get fresh air. So I, I think leaving that word vibrant out of that title, maybe we need to consider working it back in there somehow.
I think for me, like we've said, this is a real shift in this particular grouping of items. Because we were, we were talking about the urban core. And so I think without the urban core in there, that vibrant, there isn't really a place for it in the way we've renamed this in terms of mobility. Which, and I hear what you're saying, Pauline, and I was just going back. And I think, you know, some of that is, you know, and fostering the healthy neighborhoods and affordable housing throughout the city was one of our other category titles now. What this, what this strategic plan is doing, and I'm not saying wrong, but it is taking away any emphasis that we had had before on the downtown, at least on the downtown kind of business area, so to speak. You know, we'd reference the university and the river. And that sort of thing, landmarking of, you know, which mostly was going to be downtown in that area. And a lot of people in the community have criticized us for, over the years, for having too much focus on the downtown and not enough on the rest of the community. So when I was looking at this and going back and looking at other things, I'm, I'm comfortable with, particularly I think as we get into this next one, promoting an inclusive and resilient economy, that we can address some of those things maybe that, that are gone because of the, even the naming has changed. But one thing I was going to suggest adding here, I know we're in the middle of it, et cetera. But I think something in here about implementing and assessing our new transit model. I, I think a lot of people, if they don't use public transit, they don't even know that we're doing this whole transit study necessarily. And that's going to be significant changes for people who do use and rely on public transit. And so I think having something in here that kind of calls that out, that, you know, we're going to be implementing a brand new transit model. And we need to spend some time over the next couple of years. It might be a year before we get implemented, but then we still need to go to that next stage of really assessing and analyzing those changes and getting feedback and making sure that it's working in the ways that we're hoping. So to me, it seems when we're talking about mobility, to have something in here talking about our transit system makes sense.
Yeah, from what I recall, when we were meeting last time about these items, I think the mobility and the transit part of it, we intended to put together the transit study and assessment was under the next item. And I think our intent was to include it in the mobility item. I, I totally agree with you on that, Susan.
Yeah, I had that shifting from, that was, yeah, that, that was in our next item. But there was a previously, you know, undertake a comprehensive assessment of the current public transit system and so forth. I mean, I think it could be changed to say, complete the assessment of the current public transit system and, and the rest of that language and show up under the mobility heading.
You know, and is there anything wrong of having the same bullet point under two of them? I mean, just, I, I know you don't normally do that, but it, it really kind of emphasizes if somebody isn't looking at all of them. Or, or maybe we tweak it a little differently for each one of them because mobility is not just about the economy. I mean, it's people going to church. It's, you know, it's not just people going to work, which is, I think, what most people think about in economy is people either going to work or going to shop. So either they're earning money or they're spending money as part of the economy. But there's a lot of issues with mobility that could include public transit that to me are not related to the economy.
Yeah, that's why I felt it should be moved.
I agree with that.
Point.
The other thing about our transit is that we are looking at the possibilities of a zero fare. And so I think definitely when we're talking about, and if that does happen, enhancing the community mobility that for all residents, that is a huge one that I think add in this here as have, that's been suggested is going to be, I think, very beneficial to be tracked and looked at by staff.
One, one other suggestion I have under this one, which we're, well, we're filling it out a little bit now, was one that I tried to, in a sense, create a parallel construction similar to what we had with the form-based code when we initiated that. We, we identified or promoted the idea of looking at form-based coding in two locations. So in terms of mobility, one, one thing that we could, I'd suggest would be this one. Improve street safety in two high crash corridors that significantly divide the community and impede economic development. So we could try to focus this question of where in trying to enhance mobility, we already have identified serious barriers to that mobility that affect us not only in terms of our mobility, but also have significant economic impacts. And I've been promoting, for example, I think Highway Six is a major dividing line in Iowa City that I think would, we'd benefit from, from looking at that. And then the other, getting back to the downtown, I think one of the most serious issues we have in the downtown is Burlington Street and how we could potentially eliminate that divide, which, which is a barrier between the downtown and, and riverfront crossings. And it seemed to me one of the, one reason I'm interested in this, in addition to just the, the nature of the projects, is we do have Nelson Nygaard in town and, and they are a, like Optico's, an outstanding firm on issues related to transportation. And so I thought there may be an opportunity to work with them and draw from their experience, which is nationwide in terms of understanding how we might improve areas that we know are, you know, to use the, the terms we're applying to our, our COVID-19 hotspots for, for safety, for all, all forms of mobility, drivers, pedestrians and bicyclists.
I also want to go back to the complete and implement and assess the new transit model. Yeah, this, all this is good, but I, I really, in a way that it meet the need of the community, which is because I believe right now we might need more like buses in a certain area. Because we know like this neighborhood, they use the bus to go to work like on the evening time. Maybe we need, you know, like we now we have different communities than before. And some people work at the evening, some people work at the morning, some people work on Sunday. That's why I just wanted to reflect that, the need of the community. This is the new trans, like transit model to meet the need of the community or something like that. I don't know how. But we need to add something that, the assessment that we need to do is to the king that we have in the community.
And, and Ashley and I will work on specific language for these new items. I think we're just kind of taking some, some rough notes here to, to help us. But we'll, we'll come up with the flowery language after the meeting.
Sure. Where in this, if at all, does the bike share fit? Because there are plenty of people who really, if they want to get around, they, they aren't going to use, they're going to use public transit. They may not have a vehicle. I haven't, obviously nobody's sharing anything right now, but eventually we will, we will get back to that. And I know it had been delayed, but is that, is sort of implementing and building out the bike share appropriate here?
Yeah, that, that's part of our bicycle friendly community plan. That's, that's something that, as we strive for gold or, or platinum designation that we'll need to do. And it's still on our radar, but, but a launch this year, given everything that's happening is, is probably very unlikely. So it's, it's probably a 21 or 22 type of program now. As I, as I look at this, and I, I look back at my notes from the March meeting, I think you've, I think the bicycle piece is definitely a part of that. The, the transit recommendations that are coming your way definitely have to be up there. The only other things that, that were mentioned were accessibility measures. You know, we continue to move forward with curb ramp improvements and sidewalk infill and, and, you know, we'll continue to look at those. I'm not sure that needs to be up there. I'm struggling with that second bullet and how it fits into this item. I, I think that that's, that, that goes back to that Parks and Rec master plan and the neighborhood activation kind of piece that's in a previous item. So I, I would suggest that we take that neighborhood piece out. And if you don't feel like some of the bullets that we've already talked about cover that sufficiently, that we maybe go and modify some of that language. But, but to me, that just doesn't quite fit right in a mobility section.
I would agree. It, it, I think it's an important piece and we want to make sure it's covered somewhere with this language or other language. But I would agree, I don't think it quite fits mobility. We, we want people to be able to get around. Yes, we want them to have someplace to go to. But that place to go to, I think, is more part of making sure that we have the neighborhoods and the park system, et cetera, developed the way we want.
I think the place making part of that in this bullet is important. And, and just looking at the fostering healthy neighborhood main goal, I don't know that that is totally reflected in there. I think, you know, it's, I'm, I'm sure there's aspects of it that are in the park master plan. But place making in the sense of, you know, wayfinding signage and connecting people to amenities that may not just be public parks, but including schools and other places that people need to get to and want to get to. That's just my two cents, that that might be a good one to actually add in the neighborhood, fostering healthy neighborhoods.
I think your point on signage Laura is a really good one. And, and maybe that does make sense here in the mobility, when you're talking about pedestrians, bicyclists, et cetera. So people know where some of those things are, you know. How do you get to the, the, I don't even know the name now, the Sycamore Greenway. Okay, you know, how do you get to those, maybe hear about them, read about it, you know, how do I get there and those sorts of things? So I think some of that signage could potentially be a part of the mobility.
Yeah, I, I appreciate your emphasis on place making Laura. And it, it's another way of putting what I was, what I asked to be added under the foster healthy neighborhoods of neighborhood improvements. Because it's those neighborhood improvements which lead to place making. And I'm, I think that's a nice way of, of being a little bit redundant, but in the sense of introducing ideas with, with different, you know, aspects to them.
I also think that, that in fact, it wouldn't hurt us at all and might be valuable to add continuing to expand accessibility as, as a way of reaching out to among, to people with disabilities, so that they see that we're continuing to see them and continuing to work on that, even though we already are doing it.
I agree with that.
I, I still think that going back to John's comments, that his point on safe streets is important and somehow should be included in that as far as maybe continuing to assess safe streets and, and the accident ratio on some of the streets. Because that does affect mobility. If you don't have a safe street, people aren't able to walk across it or ride bikes. Not quite sure how you want to word it to fit in there though. John stated it pretty well.
Yeah, I'll just try to expand on it a little bit. I, I know I've talked to some of you about this. But I feel in certain aspects of our quality of life, for example, the, our schools, our cultural venues, there have been extraordinary advancements over the last 10 years. The improvement of the, the school system with the, the capital bond, the creation of Henshaw Film Scene, PS1, the Engler's, you know, truly remarkable advancements on, on certain areas of our quality of life. But as someone who's interested in streets, I can't say that I've seen things that I can really, you know, point to that reflect, because I think a key issue in, in climate change that reflect, because I think a key issue in, in climate change and on advancing anything is to have an understanding of where we're going by having something we can point to as kind of a, a concrete example. And actually, I, I'll use this opportunity to say, I'm really pleased with the extension of Foster Road. I think that is, is one of the nicer new streets I've seen in Iowa City. So, so the more examples we have of how we're taking the issue of safety and mobility seriously, as seriously as we take in education, I can, I think can help accelerate what it is we're trying to achieve. And I do overall still feel our, our streetscapes in Iowa City are very strongly auto-oriented. And of course, I don't mean to say that they should not still serve as means of getting around town by automobile, but there is a pretty significant imbalance overall. And I would say, and I, you know, if Highway 6 or Burlington are not the right choices, can we identify sites which can be used as a way of providing example of the direction we would like to see our mobility going?
So on this item, are we, do you have what you need, Ashley?
I was waiting to hear if there was additional feedback from council members to, to add it kind of as a, as a majority for us to work out some kind of wording. We can certainly add it now if you like.
I think something relating to, to street safety. And, I mean, we have our complete street plan that, you know, is implemented with new development, but I think having something that just acknowledges that street construction and configuration and safety is an important part of mobility and that we're, I mean, I think we are being proactive and pushing that, and that is a goal. That's not something that we're, we're ignoring.
I think a big distinction that, that council needs to make with this item is whether you want to pick out corridors and actually direct staff to work on a specific corridor. Because we, our, our MPO staff, our transportation planning staff works on street safety year-round. I mean, they're constantly looking at accident corridors and suggesting improvements. And a lot of those go unnoticed, but they could be as simple as changing locations of no parking signs to improve visibility or, or changing signal timing. It's something that they, again, they, they focus on year-round. And they, they will continue to do that going forward. So I would say that we already have a focus on that, but if there are particular corridors that are, that are concerning, if you want to call out Burlington, or if you want to call out Highway 6 and direct staff to work on that, that's a, that's a big undertaking. And we need to be able to prioritize that over the next couple of years to begin that process, particularly those two corridors, because they're, they're state roads and there's extra coordination with the state that would have to take place. On the flip side, if you wanted to look at upcoming, if you want to look at our capital plan and, and understand better where we're going to be investing in roads with pavement enhancements and, and other improvements, and, and kind of zero in on those corridors that are in the works already, we can, we can figure out how best to do that. So, you know, one example might be the, the Jefferson One Way. That's in our budget, I think, a couple of years out. And, you know, the, the question of whether to convert the Jefferson Market to two-way and how does that impact bikes and pedestrians? You know, that's, that's a corridor that's already in the works that, that will get this type of analysis. So I think, I think before we kind of sign off on this item, we need to know from council whether you want to direct specific corridors or just kind of direct staff in general to continue to put street safety at a, at a high priority.
I would say I'm concerned about starting some new project by, by picking out certain corridors. And there's a couple of reasons. And one of them, quite frankly, comes back to the situation we find ourselves in right now with this pandemic. I think we have an awful lot of uncertainty about what our city budget may look like going forward as potentially property values decline. As we find, you know, we have so many people that are out of work and we have no idea of how many bankruptcies there are going to be in our businesses and what that may mean in terms of some of the employment and what does that mean then in terms of homeowners, et cetera? And so what does that mean in terms of adding the staff that we had hoped to add and, you know, those sorts of things? So I would rather keep it along the line of, you know, we're looking at, at street safety, road safety, you know, as we do new development or as, as we do new construction or as we are making changes in certain areas, rather than going out and taking on something that, to do it right is going to be a really, really big project. And I just don't think this is quite the right time to do that.
I would agree. I think when we're talking about a strategic plan and we have quite a, a lot of lofty goals already here, I would say that now probably isn't the right opportune time to add that. Any other thoughts on this? We are about 15 minutes before we need to take a break before a formal meeting, but wanted to at least finish this and then we'll have to put the remainder of the, of the strategic plan on our neck work session is, is the thought process. Any other items for the strategic plan? What we just finished discussing? If not, then we're going to continue with our clarification of agenda items for the formal meeting.
Under the Vincent calendar, I wondered on the correspondence 7H about the utility relief, if we could pull that out of the other items and discuss that, have a discussion on that separately? Would that be possible or would others agree on that?
7H?
We don't need to pull it out, though, to do a discussion, correct?
Okay.
So, so we'll just discuss it in, at that time.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay. Any other item for the, from the formal agenda?
My, my only question had to do with the, the Harrison Street Parking Garage and whether proposing to, to pay, pay a chunk of that lease down is in any way related to the, the item that got taken off the agenda the last time, the, the possibility of, the possibility of paying back people for their parking, for their parking.
Yeah, it, it, we, we have the ability to do prepayments on that lease arrangement. It's currently maxed out at $2 million per year. And we have been doing that in past years with the sale proceeds from property that we have sold that was being held by the parking funds, specifically the Rise Building and the property here at City Hall that were formerly parking lots. So we would, we would normally be coming to you at this time seeking authorization for that $2 million prepayment. What's different about this resolution is that it gives the finance director the ability to negotiate a greater prepayment amount if that's, if that's deemed to be in our best interest. So we feel like we have the cash reserves in our parking fund to pay more and, and save more from an interest standpoint. But our current lease agreement caps prepayments at, at 2 million. So what we'd like to do is have a discussion with Capital One, which is, which is who is holding the, the debt, and see if they would allow greater, a greater prepayment amount, potentially up to paying the entire thing off if we feel like that is a, if we feel like that is a good deal for the city. Again, we, we've, we have the cash reserves to be able to do that. And if, if we did that, it would give the council more flexibility to offer rebates. It certainly wouldn't commit you to that, but we don't have that ability now because of some of the net revenue coverage issues, coverage ratio issues that we, we talked about at the last meeting. So we are asking for some additional authority to, to enter into those negotiations, which we normally wouldn't. But otherwise, that $2 million would be a standard request of you.
Thanks.
I want to talk about.
Go ahead, Maz.
I want to talk about 7H. I don't know, like Sarah Baron Johnson County affordable housing, you know, collision utility relief. Do I have to talk about that now or, or later?
That's up to you all. You can.
Yeah, you can do either.
Well, that's, that's the question I brought up and.
Yeah.
To talk about it later.
Be, because, oh, you, you was talking about H or A?
H, the utility relief.
Okay, okay. All right, okay. I, I don't know. I heard A from you. That's why. Okay.
No, H.
Okay.
Sorry.
Yeah, that's fine. We can talk about it later.
All right.
I wanted to bring up number 17, the hiring of prairie. I don't have any problem approving this tonight to hire for the prairie, but I am really concerned with the number of letters we have gotten of people in the Orchard Mill area who do not want that much prairie put in that park. They, I was just, there was a lot of letters and I think they really feel like they have not been, whether accurate or not, they feel like they have not been consulted and really feel like this is taking away an awful lot of green space that is, they say is used. I haven't been in there, so I don't know. Some people said it was used for garden, community gardens. Others were just saying green space for people to play. But we know from our history, the numbers of letters we tend to get on issues. And I thought this was an awful lot of letters from people very much opposed to that particular prairie installation. So I will vote in favor of, of the hire for this, but I would like to have more discussion, whether it's tonight or at another meeting with staff on the importance and whether or not we move forward with this particular one.
And Tyler Baird from our, our Parks Department, who oversees our natural areas effort, will, will address that item tonight and will be able to, to speak directly to the, the park that was raised in those letters, Benton Hill Park. We would, if, if we don't get approval of the contract, we're going to get into a period where we, we could miss some prairie planting windows this year, so we'd like to move ahead with that. If you want to pull that item out, it's, it's, it's .2 acres of the 86 acres. You, you could pull that item out or direct staff to, to, to work with our consultant to, to, to not do that project or, or to maybe shrink that down a little bit. But we definitely want to be able to move forward. The thing that I will say is if, you know, if, if the, if, if council wants us to go and conduct meetings about all these public spaces, then you shouldn't probably approve the contract, because I, I would venture to guess that a lot of people will object to adding more prairies in the park or adding more prairie to the neighborhood. I think aesthetically, it may not, it, it may not meet folks' expectations of what they want to see in their park. So I, I don't expect that the natural areas will be widely embraced in all the other areas as well. And if there needs to be a longer discussion on that, then there needs to be a longer discussion. But you can certainly, after hearing from Tyler tonight, if you feel like you want to take out the one, that's okay. We can work around that. But if, again, if there's an expectation that we're going to have in-depth discussion on all these, then we probably don't want to enter into that contract, because my guess is there'll be a lot other, a lot of other concerns at the 17 other sites potentially.
I think for me, one of the big things that hit on this one is there have, it, it's, some of the letters alluded to this. There have been a lot of changes in that park with the cohousing going in and a lot of trees coming out and the sidewalk and the big retaining wall. And so I think for people around this park in particular, it feels like they've just kind of gotten hammered over and over. And so that's, I think, why I would at least like to have that. I'll be happy to hear what Tyler has to say at the formal tonight. And then we can discuss whether we want to pull this one or not. I'm not, I'm not in favor of voting the contract down. I think we should go ahead so we can get things done this year. But there was just an awful lot of public comment on this particular one.
Any other item on the formal agenda?
Yeah. This item in the formal agenda, right, 17?
Yes.
But as Jeff said, you know, I, I agree with Susan Mintz completely, because this is really grabbing a lot of attention. But if we can let, if we can just take that beast out of the, really, as Jeff said, will be great. I just propose to do that so we can talk about it separately.
And we'll be able to have that discussion during our formal agenda when that item comes up.
Okay.
Any other thing for the formal agenda? Clarification?
I don't know. What is the letter? When we gonna talk about Johnson County letter?
April 16th. That's Infopack at April 16th.
Oh, okay.
All right, so we'll go to Infopack at April 9th.
Jeff, thank you for the letter on when will your city feel the fiscal impact of COVID-19? I hope everybody's a little bit scared. This is going to be a tough one to know what's coming.
Yeah, I really appreciate both the articles that, that you included in the, in the packets, because I've been thinking a lot about finances and what the way forward is going to look like, which of course not of us know.
Right.
And those long-term effects is what we have to try to get a grasp on. If there is nothing else from April 9th, we'll go to Infopack at April 16th. And Maz, this is where.
Yes, yes, but if there is somebody who for that, okay. Yeah, I really would like to talk about the letter that the Johnson County sent it to Mesquite County. And what I would like to propose, since Johnson County is using the Mesquite County gel, you know, to house some of people who are from Johnson County and they could be Iowa City resident as well. I, and I just really don't like the, those comment from somebody who deal in the daily business with people from different religion and he comment about Muslim. And I just think that if we can write something in, in support of the county letter, City of Iowa City will be great. And I would like to see what you guys think.
Yeah, I guess from my perspective, certainly that, you know, the things that were, wasn't included in their letter, at least I personally do share their sentiments there. And as we look at the, kind of the, there was an article or a picture that was taken and the things that were described there, that's certainly nothing that we would want for our individuals that go there to experience, understand that that was on his personal page. But that thought process, to me, is just ludicrous. So I personally would be in support of a letter. And are you asking that we send a letter just to state that we agree with, kind of what the Board of Supervisors sent?
Yes, just to make it simple. Yes, that's what I'm saying. Instead of like writing another letter, yes, agree with the letter. I think Jeff proposed something like this as an option. If Jeff, if you can lay in and tell us exactly what you meant when I talk to you about it, will be great. So you can help the rest of the people make a decision.
Yeah, I think if you, if you wanted to, you could simply have your own letter that supported the position of the Johnson County Board of Supervisors. You know, they, their letter was, was well-written and I'm not sure we need to write anything different, just indicate that we're supportive of their letter and I think that would carry the message.
I agree with that. And I think we could CC the Board of Supervisors and let them know of our support behind them.
Yeah, I think that's fine. I mean, I, I would agree with what, you know, Maz and Bruce have said, that the views are reprehensible. And obviously, we want to make sure that anybody from Iowa City or Johnson reprehensible, and obviously, we want to make sure that anybody from Iowa City or Johnson County or any prisoner there is being treated with full regard to their human rights.
Right.
I agree.
I agree.
All right, so that sounds like we have an agreement there. Any other items from April 16? Hearing none. As far as council updates on board assignments, we can probably get this done in two minutes. So what are thoughts? Maybe we'll just have people just speak out any of the things that they've done.
We had an executive committee meeting yesterday for the access center. Looks like we're probably going to push the open date in terms of when we would start accepting patients, back to early January. Concern with potential disruptions with construction, which haven't real, there's been a little bit, but not too much so far, just also gives us a little bit more flexibility, if anything did come up with disruptions, given the pandemic situation, and also concerns about trying to open right before the holidays in terms of staffing and those kinds of patterns. So that was the decision of the executive committee on Monday, that we'll push that back to, I believe, the 4th of January.
I'll just report on Iowa City Area Development Group has a new president. Kate Moreland was appointed by the board recently, so that's big news, and I think very good for that important entity in our community. And Iowa City Area Development is working hard to just figure out financially where it can be and where it can make, you know, the most positive impact in terms of all of the economic ramifications of the pandemic. And they're working with the Business Partnership and the Downtown District and other organizations to help get information out on, you know, whether it's the FBA loans and the Paycheck Protection Program, that kind of thing. So a lot of activity happening there. Also, UNESCO City of Literature is considering delaying the Music IC Festival, which is slated for June. They'll make a final determination about that soon, but just kind of looking at retooling that in-person event, which happens every year.
Maz Aher and I are awaiting word on a date and time soon for a Rules Committee meeting. We don't meet very often, but I believe it has something to do with the Public Arts Committee and their bylaws, so we're waiting to hear on that soon.
Hearing nothing else, then I think we are going to adjourn until 7:00 PM.